Welcome to Community Conversations where we will be bringing you fascinating discussions with local leaders about topics everyone is talking about. I'm Dr. Cender Sinclair, your host for today, and our special guest is Oscar Gutierrez, a member of Santa Barbara City Council. Welcome, Oscar.
Thank you, Cender. I really appreciate you having me on.
Oh gosh, you know, I have been noticing you, watching you, admiring you for such a long time. You do such a fabulous job for our community. Now, okay, let's talk about, you know, when you were coming up in the world. So you were born and raised on the west side. So tell me, what was it like growing up there?
It was a lot of fun, you know? We were kind of a little bit of like latchkey kids, you know? Our parents worked really hard. They had multiple jobs because as you know, it's expensive to live here in Santa Barbara, even back then in the early eighties. So we would just kind of run out and play at our local schools and parks and stuff and then come home when the streetlights came on. And it was fun, but you know, at the time, especially near the late eighties, early nineties, there was a little spike in like gang activity. So it did get a little dangerous at times for us, but the leaders at the time did some, some changes and were able to address that by the early 2000s. It kind of died off a little bit, but for the most part, it was really fun and wholesome to grow up on the west side with my friends and family. And I'm pretty lucky that I was able to be born and raised here.
Yeah. So did you have a sense when you were growing up, when that gang stuff was going on, that it was mostly in the west side? Was it all over town? Was it?
Yeah, it was, it was, I felt like it was all over town, but mainly on the east and west side, there, there are some issues there. But, but yeah, you know, it's, it's kind of a complicated issue about, you know, when you have a certain population that has a lack of resources and a lack of access to certain things, they, they tend to turn to negative activities to be able to address or cope with it. And that's, that's why I say that I was grateful that the leaders at the time saw that and addressed it so that they could try to dissuade the youth from going down that path.
So, so Oscar, walk us through a sort of your college years and your early professional time.
Sure, yeah. I, I was lucky enough to grow up in a community where, in particular, our school district, they implemented a community service requirement to graduate from high school. And I remember it started when my brother was in high school. He's about eight years older than me. And I remember that at the time, it was a bit controversial because people were, were saying that they didn't think it was fair that the youth were being forced to work for free in order to graduate. But by the time I was in high school, it was pretty well established and, and they had a system to be able to help the students volunteer for organizations to meet that volunteer requirement. And I'm grateful for that because I got into video when I was in high school because my dad had bought a video camera to record birthdays and holidays and stuff. And I got really into it and I went to my counselor and I said, is there any way I can complete these community service hours to graduate? Having to do with video. And she told me that it just so happened the day before, a woman came in saying that she was looking for volunteers for her nonprofit where she would record people tell their life story on camera. And she mainly worked with the elderly and the terminally ill. And I was just eager to do community service work doing video. So I contacted her, her name is Life, or her, her name is Kate Carter and her nonprofit is Life Chronicles. And I was 17 and that's, that's basically what started my path to where I am now. Because even, even then, I still wasn't sure if I was going to go to college. I thought I was just gonna, you know, do the, the bare minimum to graduate high school and then get a job somewhere. But because of Kate and her nonprofit and the ability to be able to hear people tell their life stories, really inspired and influenced me to do more with my life. So I decided to go to City College and study film and journalism. And in doing so, I started volunteering and interning and then eventually got hired at TV Santa Barbara and worked my way up to being the senior producer. And in that process, I, I won several awards for my work. And, and it then inspired me even further because I was actually the director editor for Jerry Roberts News Show. And we would, we were covering elections and interviewing elected officials and government officials. And in doing so, it inspired me to want to help out more with my community. I always wanted to help out with my community. My, my, my parents always raised us to, to want to care about where we live. And, and there are examples of that because, you know, they immigrated here in the sixties and they really struggled to make sure that they could still live here and raise a family here. And you know, you know how beautiful Santa Barbara is and it's not easy. So they made me really care about the fact of how much they struggled and sacrificed for us to live here compared to where they came from. So I wanted to like, in a way, give back. And I've always really been, been really interested in the news and, and you know, chasing down the truth and then reporting the truth to the public. So it all kind of was all mixing together and falling into place. And when I was the director producer for, for Jerry Roberts News Show and we were following the elections, I, I thought, well, what, what more can I do to, you know, get down to, to the truth and bring it to the people? And also serve the people than to run for office? So I, you know, went and spoke to some friends and family and asked if they were willing to support me if I ran for office. And they said yes. And so I started knocking on doors. I put my name on the ballot and I ran against three other people. It was a pretty tough race, but I, I ended up winning with almost 54% of the vote. So that was kind of impressive. And yeah, it's been, it's been five years and it's been a wild five years, you know? I being elected in 2018, going through the pandemic and, and coming out of it now, it's, it's definitely, definitely been a historic period for the city and the nation and the world, you know? And to be an elected official during that time and going through everything that we all went through is, is just really, sometimes I just kind of sit there and be like, wow, is this really my life, you know? But I'm, I'm hoping that the people are, are content with me being a representative for them. And I'm always striving to like learn more and to work more and to do more. So in a nutshell, that's kind of my story of how I started and what drove me to, to be where I am today.
Yeah. And what really attracted you and made you want to be a city council member? Gosh, you know, it seems like one thing after the other of you doing what you love to do. I mean, you loved film, you loved giving back to the community, you'd all of that. And that's exactly what you were doing, but you had no idea where it was going to lead.
No, and again, it, it goes back to the leaders at the time making policy that would, in the hopes of guiding the population to a more productive, better life. Because if that school district years, decades ago, didn't make it a rule that you had to volunteer to graduate high school, then I don't know where I'd be right now, you know?
Do you think that Kate Carter realizes the impact she had on your life?
Yeah, yeah, no, she does. She does. And I frequently refer to her as like my second mom because she was a huge influence, you know? She, she really inspired me to want to go to college because at the time I was at a crossroads where I was like, I'm just going to do this community service and get a job somewhere. But you know, she was always encouraging me like, no, you should go to college. It's, it's more than just education. It's connections and life experiences. And she's 100% correct. And I, and I kind of tell that to all the youth that I run, run into. They're wary about going to college as well.
Yeah. So how old were you when you started knocking on those doors?
I was 33 when I decided to run. Yeah, it was right after the 2017 election. And it was right before the Thomas Fire. And so then the Thomas Fire happened and then the debris flow happened, you know, a month later. And I was volunteering for the Red Cross. And so during that whole time, I was already thinking about running. And during that time of volunteering for the Red Cross and going into Montecito and, and handing out supplies to the people that were affected by the debris flow, it just reinforced that, yeah, this is something I want to do. This is, I want to be able to help more people and be able to pass policy and represent them on the government level.
So what would you say to young people who might be thinking that they want to run for office or serve the community and as elected official in some way?
Sure. I, if they're young, let's say high school, college, I want to make sure that they know that your reputation is pretty important. So if you're doing things or hanging out with people that might give you a bad reputation, then I suggest you don't do that because people do judge you when you're an elected official, when you're in the public eye. They, they judge you way more critically than if you weren't. So whatever you do and say, people will, will dissect it and, and wonder why you're doing that and why you're saying that. So make sure that, you know, you're living a pretty neutral life, I guess I could say. But stay true to yourself and your, and your values, you know? And, but just make sure that, that you're, you're being conscious of it and that you're also being mindful of helping out the community. So having a record of you being active in the community in one way or another is always key to prove that you actually care about what's happening around you.
Yeah, that's great advice. And of course, be careful what you say and do on social media.
Yeah, yeah, especially now with social media. When I was younger, social media was just starting out. So it was still fairly new, but we didn't really have cell phones or smartphones back then. So it's definitely a lot more dangerous to unintentionally share something with the world that, you know, might come back to bite you.
Yeah, you least expect it.
Yeah.
Wow, that's, that's really great advice.
Yeah.
So, okay, let's switch gears and talk about the west side. How would you describe the west side? And some of the challenges facing the people who live there?
So historically, it's been my majority minority populated. That's when, when I was growing up. It was a very eclectic, diverse community and it still is. But the recent census has shown that there's been a large percentage of people of color that have left the, the west side and the city overall. Mainly because of affordability, it's, it's just harder to, to be able to live here. And, and more affluent people have been kind of taking their place. And it, and it just so happens that they, they tend to not be people of color. So it's still diverse, but not as much as it used to be. And it's been also historically the, one of the most affordable places in town to live in. But again, recently that's changed since the pandemic. Housing and, and living costs have gone up. So, so it's still a good place to start your family. I, I see a lot of young families on the west side. And that's really encouraging and good to see because that's the way I remember it growing up. There's a lot of young families. And yeah, it's, I want to say it's very, very wholesome. It's a wholesome place to grow up and, you know? At least in my case, I know most of my neighbors and known them for years, you know? And, and we can call on each other if we, if we need anything and need help. So yeah, that's kind of the way I describe the west side.
That's great. So, so Oscar, I've heard you say that you like to consider all sides of any issue. Certainly an issue that's going to come before the council. And so my question is, and this is what I don't quite understand. So here we went from general elections to district elections and you are representing the west side, the district three. Yeah. And so how, do you find it challenging or how do you represent their issues while hearing all sides of every issue? So help me understand that if you would.
Yeah. So, so me personally, I've always kind of been like that. I try to be as objective as possible, which I think really helped me pursue a career in, in journalism and documentary filmmaking. I just feel like even in, even if I personally don't agree with someone's point of view, I should still hear it out. And that's, that's something that was really taught to me and engraved in me through my work at public broadcasting here. Because there's a lot of opinions that are shared here that I might not necessarily support, but I'm supportive of people being able to express it, you know? So that, that was before I ever thought about getting into politics. That was something just in me, you know? To a fault sometimes even, you know? So, so yeah, I just think it's fair and balanced that, that even though I'm elected by the residents of the third district, I'm still a representative of the city overall. So even if somebody on the Riviera were to say they had an issue and they reached out to me, my response isn't going to be, hey, not my district, not my problem. My response is, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to see what I can do about it. Because the, the whole premise of the district elections is that historically, there are certain types of people, certain types, people from a certain type of class that kept being elected. And I mean, I think we can all agree that there's a, living on the Riviera is different than living on the lower west side. You know, you have a different perspective on life in the city.
Absolutely.
Depending on where you live. So having equitable representation of that is important when it comes to creating the laws and policies that the city is going to be abiding by. So, so that's the, the whole mindset behind the district elections. But as I said, we serve the city overall. So even if you are from the Upper Riviera or the Lower West Side, I'm going to listen to you objectively and equally as much as possible. And my loyalty obviously are to the people who put me in office. I think nowadays, we, most people probably feel that, oh, elected officials do what they want. And I could see why they think that because of certain elected officials who did do what they want. But in my case, I tried to remember, I didn't, I didn't put myself here. The people put me here, you know? So I have to be able to represent them. And there have been some times where I necessarily didn't agree with, with what they were asking me to do, but I'm their representative. I'm, I'm literally representing them. So I still fought their fight for them, you know?
That had to be an interesting situation.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's the reality. That, that is what representative government is. Like I'm, I'm just the, like, for example, if, let me put it this way. If you go to a restaurant and your server is a vegetarian, but you ordered a steak, that server is still going to serve you that steak, even though they personally don't agree with it, you know? So that's the way I, I look at being an elected official is that I might not agree with it personally, but it's my job to do what the people are asking me to do.
Yeah. That is a great example. How did you get so wise?
Again, Life Chronicles, you know?
Yes. Gosh, that Kate is quite, quite a human.
She is, yeah.
She's a gift to all of us, to everyone who knows her.
Yeah, absolutely.
Gosh. So Oscar, I go, as you know, to a whole lot of nonprofit events and it seems like everyone I go to, I see you there. And I even see you on social media, having gone to events that I didn't go to. So, so, and I find that fascinating and encouraging. And so do you find that a good way to connect with your constituents or what? What drives you to want to go to all these nonprofit events?
Yeah, you know, at first, when I first got elected, I thought being invited to these events was kind of like a perk. You know, like, oh, you know, you work so hard on the dais. Let's invite you something outside of City Hall so you can have fun. But then after two or three events, I realized every time I would show up to an event, people would come up to me and start talking about some of the issues that they were facing, you know? And then it dawned on me like, oh, wait, they're, I'm not being invited to have a good time. I'm being invited to be confronted, you know, or, or being addressed with issues that otherwise people wouldn't be able to bring up to me because we, we're all busy with our lives, working and, and family and such. That it's hard for people to come to City Hall to say, hey, I want to talk to you about this or to sit down and write me an email. So if I'm at an event and somebody sees me, they'll be like, oh, I want to talk to him about this thing that I noticed about the city. Or I want to share my opinion about this issue. And then they come up to me and they do it there. So in a way, it's like, it's kind of like a, almost like a public town hall. It kind of, in my particular case, it kind of turns into that because people can come up to me and voice their concerns or opinions or ideas about issues. So once I realized that, that's when I was like, you know, I should, I should come out as much as possible. So people have as many opportunities to talk to me about the issues that they care about in a not so formal setting. And also it's educational for me because sometimes, you know, Santa Barbara has so many nonprofits and it's, it's hard to keep track of all of them. So when I get invited to an event, it's an opportunity for me to learn about that organization and how we can collaborate to address the needs of the community and the city together. And yeah, that, and that's kind of one of the reasons why I try to make it out to as many as possible so that, you know, I get to meet the people and hear them out, but also learn about all these different great causes and organizations in our community and how we can work together.
That's so commendable that, that once you figured out, hey, this isn't just a perk. I'm, I'm here working. You didn't say, so therefore I'm not going to any more of these. No, instead you did the other, you went the other way and said, so I'm going to go to more of them. Because you saw the opportunity.
Yeah, I leaned into it because I also realized, you know, as an elected official, we have term limits. So we're only doing this for a few years and then it's over. So I figured I better take advantage of this now because once it's done, it's done. It's over. You know, like I, when I was running for office, I was able to meet with former electeds and current electeds and ask them for advice about what it's like to be an elected official. And some of them had told me, you know, like Hal Conkman told me, take advantage of as, as many invitations to events and to meet people as possible. Because once you're no longer an elected official, you're going to notice people aren't going to invite you to stuff. So take advantage of it. So that's kind of my mindset. It's like, okay, like if I was in a, in a, in a race, right? I, I'm going to run 100% until I cross that finish line and collapse. Then to just kind of saunter through and then wonder, oh, should I have gone harder? Should I ran faster? You know, like, no, I'm going to go full speed and then, and when it's done, it's done, you know?
That is, wow. You have quite the understanding and wisdom, I'd say. So Oscar, what do you see as some of the, you know, I would use the word important, but maybe else instead use the word hot button issues that are occupying the minds of Santa Barbara folks today?
Some of them are consistent for the last few decades, like affordability is a huge one. It's, it's really hard to be able to afford to live here. There, there are some stats that just came out where you have to be making over $160,000 a year to feel happy living here. And that's really shocking, you know? That's really sad considering how, you know, when we were growing up, my parents worked, you know, as gardeners, custodians, housekeepers. And they were able to raise a family of four and buy a house in Santa Barbara back then. And now here I am with a college degree, with a career, and I'm finding it hard to be able just to afford to live here, you know? So, you know, times have changed and it's not just me. Obviously, overall, the community is struggling to be able to live here. And it's becoming a big issue because businesses can't find employees to hire because it's so expensive to live here that they're moving away to a community that's more affordable. And they can't find people to work for them for the wages that they're offering. And it's becoming a major issue, you know? And, and, and it's not just like restaurant workers or, or construction workers. It's also like our doctors, our nurses, our police officers, our firefighters. They can't even afford to live here. So they're having to live in other communities and commute here. And that creates a problem that we saw, you know, during the Thomas Fire and, and the debris flow when the freeway was cut off. Our first responders weren't able to get here to service us because they had no way to actually physically get to the city. And because they lived outside of it. So we're trying to, as a council, find ways to make it more affordable so that people can live here by either building affordable housing or passing policy that could possibly restrict or help renters' rights to be able to feel more comfortable and secure in living here. But it's difficult because there's, you know, conflicts of opinion on the, on the council. And, and yeah, we're just trying to work together as, as much as possible to, to address that affordability issue. Another issue would be the homeless crisis. You know, we definitely have an issue with homelessness here. It's, it's hard to be able to pinpoint all the causes of homelessness, but the ones that keep coming up is, you know, mental health, the drug addiction and financial inability, I guess you can say. And sometimes it's a mix of all three or a few of them. And it's almost like a case by case scenario, you know?
It really is.
Yeah. And, and we have partnered with a few organizations that specialize with helping the homelessness, like SB Act is one of them. Good Samaritan, The United Way and a few others that we, we partnered with. And we spend taxpayer dollars to employ them to help us address the homelessness issue. And we feel like we're definitely making progress in it, but it's an ever-changing situation. And the state overall is having issues with it. We, I believe we have the most homeless population out of the whole country. And, and it makes sense, right? Because when you think about the climate in California compared to the other countries, like, it's usually not too hot, not too cold here. So obviously your likelihood of surviving is better here than it would be in other parts of the country. So that kind of attracts some people to come here to be able to just survive. And, and yeah, it's going to be, it, it needs to be a nationwide effort to address the homelessness issue. It's not just going to come down to us seven council members, you know, to be able to fully address it. But we're doing our best and we're working with other cities, our neighboring cities. We're working with the counties and obviously the state to try to work together to, to come up with, with solutions to this problem.
Yeah, you know, I like how, how the council not only works with other cities and, and all, but you do, I mean, it seems like a pretty good job of letting people know what you're working on, what kind of progress you see being made. I mean, really understanding, you know, it may, it, the homeless situation may never be solved. But as long as we're making some kind of progress and noticing the progress, reporting on the progress, you know, that's got to count for something.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting because people often see the homeless and they think of them as the other, you know? And, and some of them, they just had some bad luck in their life or they made some bad decisions that resulted in them being there. And we have to have a little bit of patience and compassion with them because it's not so simple as just go get a job. Like it's not that simple, you know? And luckily we have these organizations that fully understand that and they're trying to, to deal with that. And also the public sometimes feels like, I've had so many people say like, why aren't you guys doing anything about the homelessness? And I'm sitting there like, we have multiple meetings a week, every week about it. We have so much taxpayer dollars going to address it, you know? It's, it's, there's definitely an issue of educating the public about what we're doing and what we can do. Some people just think, well, why don't you just put them in jail? It's like, we, you want us to arrest them for being poor? Like, we can't really do that. That goes against their constitutional rights of being a human being, you know? We can't do that. And it's just, it's hard and it's frustrating for everybody, you know? Because I, I understand as some business owners are really frustrated because, you know, they're trying to run a business and you have you know, they're trying to run a business and you have somebody come in causing a disturbance or blocking your doorway or what have you. And after a while, that does start to weigh on you. You get really frustrated. And at the same time, we also, overall, Santa Barbara is a very loving community, so we have to be able to have just a little more patience and compassion with these people and and help them out, you know, and that's what we're trying to do. It it's just complicated because they have their rights as well as human beings. And we're trying to respect that, but at the same time, just keep order and balance to the community.
Yeah, that's that's a tough one.
Yeah.
And you're right, your point is well taken. Each case, it's not like, oh, the homeless problem. Yes, that does exist, but each person, each situation is different from the one before and the one after. And if we can kind of look at each individual person, it might, we might be able to make a little more progress. And I think that you're doing that as well.
Yeah, yeah. When we talk to these partners that 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 we um, that we work with, they tell us about how they they meet some individuals that it's literally taken them years of constantly reaching out to them with services and then constantly denying the services. It's taken them years for them to finally say, okay, I'll take the services. But they don't, they don't stop. They keep doing it. They keep going out and saying, hey, here are these services. We want to help you. We want to help you live a better life than than being out in the street. And sometimes it just takes them a while to acknowledge that, oh, this isn't normal. Some people find it normal to be able to sleep out on the street because it's just, that's where their mind is. So it takes time for them to meet people who are willing to help them and then gain that trust and and belief that they are willing to help them. Because some of these people have been hurt over and over again by people, or they just literally get overlooked by people walking by as if they're invisible.
Yeah.
So it takes time for them to kind of be able to learn and trust in another person that's willing to help them. So that's what I've learned from being on council and talking with these allies that we're working with to address this issue is that it takes time for some of these people to to get it, you know?
You know, and back to the affordability issue, if if we could just for a minute, and especially the affordable housing. It seems like, you know, your example about the freeway being shut down and first responders and others not being able to come here to help us. Um, it feels like it's in everyone's best interest to find some kind of a solution, even if it's just partial solution to the affordability issue. It seems big and complex, and it is, but it's not impossible to sort of improve, I guess, at least for some people.
Yeah. Yeah, it's it's tough because Santa Barbara is a unique place. People want to live here because of how beautiful and special it is, you know? I mean, you just go up north or down south less than an hour, and we're talking about thousands of dollars of difference of the cost of living there. But Santa Barbara is unique. It's it's a very special place. So people want to be able to pay more to live here in a weird way. And that's affecting everybody, even the people that were born and raised here at a time when that wasn't so much the case, but it definitely is now. And yeah, building affordable housing is key, passing legislation that can keep things more affordable is key. But again, it takes the will of the elected officials to be able to stand behind it. And again, we're working with our fellow neighboring cities and our county leaders, our state leaders to be able to address that. And it's just difficult. It's it's hard, it's complex, and there's a lot of facets to it. And uh, we're hoping we can make some headway.
So Oscar, can you tell me about a pivotal experience in your life?
Uh, wow, there's a lot to choose from there. A pivotal experience.
You already told us about Kate Carter, so you can't use that one.
That was a major one, yeah. Pivotal high school, the way our public school system here works, that was pretty pivotal. I suppose going to to Santa Barbara City College was pretty pivotal for me because learning, you know, film and journalism there. Yeah, City College is is one of the best community colleges in the country, if not the best, and uh, being able to interact with some of the faculty and staff there was really influential. And and then also meeting some great people that have become my lifelong friends was really influential as well. I I'm a big, big proponent of the mindset of like, if you want to be successful, hang out with successful people. And and I met a lot of successful people there, whether it was the teachers or the staff or my classmates. And yeah, you know, it's it's contagious. It's it 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 really is influential. So that's another bit of advice I want to give the youth is if you want to be successful, hang out with people who are successful because it is contagious. I I've noticed it. Other people have have, um, I've helped other people out. They've helped me out. It's just the way it works, but you have to be able to to meet and interact with with these successful people in order to to learn off of them and and hopefully achieve as well. So I would say City College was pretty pivotal for me because I was able to really gain a lot of skills in in visual storytelling, in uh, in writing, uh, editing, all of that through City College. And it won me a lot of awards. Like I said, it got me to go to UCSB and and graduate with honors from UCSB and City College and high school, all of that. So yeah, I would say the college system here in Santa Barbara was very pivotal and influential in my life.
That is great. And what great advice for young people.
Yeah.
And so true. You see it over and over, and you see the opposite, unfortunately, also be true.
Yeah, absolutely. And yeah, I, the the reason I learned that was again, because when I was in high school, I was hanging out with a bad crowd for the first few years in high school.
Really?
Yeah, and I was going down a a really dark path. And it wasn't until the end of my junior year where my counselor said, you haven't completed any community service hours and you need those to graduate. You're not, you you've missed so many classes that you're on academic probation, you know? So like I, yeah, the likelihood of me graduating was pretty slim at that point. And um, luckily, again, like I said, I met Kate Carter through her nonprofit. And that, like, my senior year, I was able to really buckle down and study hard and be able to um, complete over a hundred hours of community service, which won me an award when I graduated. So it won me an honor. So I went from almost dropping out to graduating with honors within a year because of, you know, the way our school system's set up, luckily.
Well, and the way you responded.
Oh, for sure. I mean, again, I was very lucky to meet Kate because if it wasn't for her, I don't even know where I'd be. I don't even like to think about it, to be honest.
So what, do you, do you remember, do you have a sense of what was drawing you in the quote unquote wrong direction?
Yeah, it was just, you know, hanging out with people I thought was cool, you know, and and hanging out late at night, not studying, you know, going off and doing mischievous things, you know? But luckily, again, the the power of hearing people tell their life stories and them saying, in my case, this is what was most important in life, and me kind of like taking that in and saying, what am I gonna say at the end of my life, you know? Am I gonna say I was hanging out with a bunch of dudes in a garage and driving around at night, you know? Or am I gonna say I did all these amazing things and helped all all these people? So it really kind of inspired me to do do more and do better.
So what were you, let's just say you were sixteen or
Yeah, seventeen about, yeah.
Sixteen, seventeen. So when they said, you have to do this community service, you were, were you kind of grumpy, like, oh, fine?
Yeah. Yeah, I was. I was kind of like, oh, okay, I'll just do it to graduate, to get you off my back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But luckily.
So you just stumbled.
Yeah.
I mean, who made the choice of Kate Carter in in Chrono, Life Chronicles?
I did.
Because of the video aspect.
Correct.
Okay.
It was that.
You could almost see somebody, you know, kids today love video, this, that, the other thing, right? So you could almost see that happening to someone
For sure.
even today.
Yeah, I mean, and then also, you know, because of TVSB, because of bu- public broadcasting as a whole medium, if we didn't have a public broadcasting station, again, I don't know where I'd be. It it got me really into journalism. It got me to meet Jerry Roberts and Josh Molina, Nick Walsh, all of them. So um, that was really influential as well.
I wonder if the folks at TVSB even realize the powerful impact that they are having and can have on young people.
Yeah, no, trust me, they do. And 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 we did when when I was working here as well because um, we're constantly preaching that because some people have the notion of like, oh, you know, why do we still have public broadcasting when we have smartphones and social media apps?
Oh, yeah.
And they're missing the, they're missing the point about having a location where you can go to learn all that stuff and uh, be able to collaborate with other people and be able to express yourself. And just having a s- a safe place where you can share your ideas and opinions and also have access to tens of thousands of dollars worth of equipment that otherwise would take you forever to try to buy and and accumulate. So um, it's it's, public broadcasting as a whole needs to be protected a hundred percent. And it and uh, and I'm hoping that there's gonna be a resurgence uh, among uh, the public about it because I feel like people don't realize, I I don't think they think about it too much, is that all these social media apps, they're they're corporations or companies. But public broadcasting, for the most part, is is either a nonprofit or it's being run by the taxpayer dollars. And that's, that's really important because it's a right for us to be able to express ourselves, our First Amendment right, you know? And uh, the thing about these apps is that they're corporations, so at any point, they can say, we're not gonna allow you to use our services anymore, but it's not like that with public broadcasting. Everyone has the right to use it.
That's a very good distinction. Okay, so let's get back to um, issues facing folks in Santa Barbara. So um, I know I read somewhere that you uh, loved riding a bike when you were a kid. In fact, I think you still ride bikes.
Yes.
So let's talk about bikes on State Street.
Yeah, you know, it's become a a hot button issue because uh, there are some bad riders out there, I I would say, that are kind of almost ruining ruining it for the rest of us. I I want to say like ninety-nine percent of us are really responsible, respectful bike riders. But you know, there's some people out there that are kind of acting out and and they're giving us a bad uh, representation. But I think it's a a right to be able to ride your bike around because some people either can't afford to own a car or even ride public transportation. So having a bicycle is their best option to be able to move around town, get to work or school or or what have you. And uh, to restrict that, I think, is just a huge disservice to the entire community. Plus, it's healthier, it's better for the environment. And uh, it's not going anywhere. I I I just recently was giving a tour to some friends at City Hall. And I was showing them this hand-drawn map of Santa Barbara from eighteen ninety-eight. And around the border of this hand-drawn map were um, buildings that they were highlighting about how great Santa Barbara is. Like, we have banks, we have libraries, we have churches. And then one of them was a bicycle shop from eighteen ninety-eight.
Wow.
So even back then, they were like, hey, look how cool we are. We have a bicycle shop. Like, this is how, like, you know, cutting edge of a community we are, you know? So it's been a part of our culture for well over a hundred years. And it's not gonna go anywhere. It's only getting more accessible and the technology is only getting more um, affordable. So for us to say, no, we shouldn't have this, or we should ban it or restrict it, it's just not realistic, in my opinion, because it's the way of the future, whether you like it or not. And we just have to, it's growing pains, you know, like, we have to just get used to it. There was a certain time where cars were new to people and they had to learn that they couldn't just cross the middle of the street. They had to like walk to the corner and then look both ways and then cross, you know, so. So yeah, it, I feel like it's just like a pivotal point in our society that we're gonna have to get accustomed to.
So do you have any ideas or about what we could do to, I don't know, better educate or somehow come up with some sort of incentive for those people who ride in an irresponsible way, especially on State Street?
Yeah, so we are working with local nonprofit bicycling organizations to do more outreach and education to the public. And we're actually even discussing with our local school district to see if they can implement bike riding education and training in their curriculum, just like we have driver's ed, right? We should start having bicycling ed as well so that the the young generations know that there are laws that abide, that you have to abide by when you're on a bike. It's just, it's not a lawless thing you're doing. You have to abide the law, you know, obey the laws as well. So we're hoping that we can do that with the gen- the the young generation now so that it carries on into the future because there's definitely a little gap between the generations of how they were taught to ride a bike. And it's being addressed and we're hoping that we start to see of the effects of it because we've tried to talk to the police about implementing some kind of laws. But they said it's it's pretty hard for them to enforce laws. You you know, it's hard to be able to clock a bicyclist with a with a with a speedometer.
Yeah.
Uh, so to implement speed limits would be really difficult for them. And then to apprehend them on a bicycle is 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 a bit difficult as well. Because there's no license plates on them. So if they get away, they get away, you know, and it's it's, it's proven to be um, a bit more complicated than we initially thought it was gonna be. So education is gonna be the key factor to avoid all of that.
Well, good for you for working with different kinds of uh, organizations and to to address that.
Yeah, thanks.
So Oscar, I've also heard you talk about um, how open spaces are, it's kind of one of your issues.
Yeah.
Tell, tell me about that.
Yeah, so like earlier, when I, when I mentioned when I was growing up, we we had so many open spaces to to uh, take advantage of, you know, our our school campuses used to be open. At some point, the last few years, they've kind of gotten more uh, locked down. So after class ends for the day around three o'clock, majority of the campuses in the city, they just, they get locked up. And that includes the weekend. So if you're driving by a school on the weekend and you see it empty, it's because it's locked up. But when I was a kid, there weren't even gates, so you could just walk on and off of campus whenever you wanted. I remember, you know, when I was watching TV, my mom would say, you watch too much TV, like, go outside. I would go to the school and sure enough, there were my friends whose moms told them the same thing. And then we started playing, you know, either soccer, football, baseball, basketball, whatever, you know? And now I go by the schools and they just look like ghost towns and it's really sad. And and then you look at these stats of like, you know, kids' health getting worse and addiction to screens and other things. And it's kind of like, well, what do you expect when you, when you limit their access to open spaces and play areas, you know, like, that what other things are they gonna do, you know? So you don't really give them, leave them much options if you don't allow them to have spaces where they can go have fun and play. So I've been working with the school district and the in the school board to um, try to work some kind of agreement, understanding to open up the campuses again so that, you know, not just the kids, but also just the community overall, like, parents want to play with their kids, like, adults want to play basketball too. And uh, and yeah, so hopefully we'll we'll come to some kind of understanding. But also our parks, I noticed that historically, growing up, very few parks had fences or gates, but now I'm seeing it more and more. And it's addressing a lot of issues. It's it's addressing the longevity of the fields because some of the fields get played on so much. It kills the grass and they turn into, you know, dusty, muddy pits, basically. And uh, parks in Iraq feel that if they close off the park, then it gets used and abused less. And also, it keeps the kids from being able to run into the street if a ball gets away from them, you know? Uh, the fence is there to stop that. Uh, and then it also, you know, hopefully, kind of deters people from camping out on the parks as well. But my issue is growing up and historically, you know, the, our parks are over a hundred something years old, some of them, and they've never had fencing on it. And psychologically, when you see a fence, immediately it just lets you know that you're not supposed to be in there. So when I see a fence around a park or a gate around a park, I, it just, it bothers me to see that and I don't like seeing it. So I, I also don't like the fact that it costs money, that, you know, fencing is expensive and the upkeep of the fencing. You you're gonna have to keep, you know, maintaining it over the years and that's gonna add more money to uh, to the budget that could be going to something else. So I just So I just inherently am against the fencing of parks and open spaces because I just don't think psychologically or physically is a good idea for anybody's health. But again, I'm only one of seven, right? So my colleagues might disagree with me and city staff might disagree with me. So I'm trying to convince my, my colleagues to, to see that, see it the way that I see it. But again, it's difficult because there's a lot of different opinions and perspectives that, that they're all kind of addressing.
Yeah, well, good for you for hanging in there.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
So accomplishments, when you look at, you, you say you've been there five years now. So over that five years, what would you point to as an accomplishment that you're especially proud of, that you either orchestrated or were part of or?
So for one, it would be my ability to be as responsive and accessible than I feel like any other council member before me has ever been. Cause I, I make it a point to respond to every email and, and message on social media that I have. I'm, I'm on almost every platform, you know, Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, Twitter, LinkedIn, Nextdoor, Reddit, you know, I'm on all of them because I realize that's how people communicate nowadays, you know? So I have these accounts so that people can feel welcome to send me any concerns, ideas or issues that they're facing. And I respond to them just as if somebody were to email me or send me a handwritten letter or a phone call or come up to me on the street. So, so I, I purposely make myself as accessible as possible because I feel like that's obviously part of my responsibility of being an elected official is to be accessible and responsive. And, and I respond to all of them because I wanna make sure that they know that I'm there to represent them and serve them. And so that's a major accomplishment, I feel, that I can be proud of. The other one would be the fact that after five years, the city finally implemented a reporting app. So it's easier for people to now report things using the city's app to report whether, you know, there's a pothole or a street light went out or a tree fell or something like that. It took five years of me constantly bringing it up, but they finally launched it. It's called SB Connect. So I recommend everybody download it and use it as much as possible. So whenever you have any issues or you wanna find out hours of operations for parks or you wanna reserve a spot at a park, you can use the app to do all of that. You can find all the different department contacts on there. It's really useful and it took years to do it, but it's finally there. And that's another, you know, thing that I wanted to make sure that I accomplished is that the, the accessibility of your local government, I wanted to make sure that we step into the twenty-first century, you know? Cause some, some cities have had it since like the early two thousands, you know? Ever since smartphones came out, yeah. And it's taken us until twenty twenty-three to do it. But at least it's finally done and we have it. And so that's another accomplishment I'm really proud of. The other thing was I was able to work with our state representative, our state Senator Monique Limon to streamline the permitting process for street vending. So we made it a lot easier and, and, and quicker to get permits to be able to sell things on the street. Like it, it all happened a few years ago before the pandemic because of the people selling cascarones, the confetti eggs during fiestas.
Yes.
Uh, some state representatives saw that happening and was like, these people aren't paying taxes. We gotta get them permitted. So we kind of were conflicted by that because it's such an old tradition. And we're talking over a couple hundred year old tradition, you know? So we made it as simple as possible and, and we both went out and spoke to people in English and in Spanish, explaining how easy it is to, to get the permits. And it's been pretty successful and we're, we're trying to make sure that street vendors feel safe and represented here. And people know that they could buy from them because they've been vetted by the permitting process. So that's another accomplishment I'm pretty proud of as well.
Those are great accomplishments.
Thank you.
You can really feel proud about that.
Yeah.
Wow. So Oscar, we've only got a few minutes left. What, I don't know, what message would you have for, or recommendations or suggestions for citizens of Santa Barbara? Residents of Santa Barbara?
Uh, I would, I would recommend everyone, whether you're a voter or not, it doesn't matter. If, as long as you like live or work or are in Santa Barbara, you should feel confident and encouraged to reach out to your elected leaders on any level, whether it's city council, whether it's county, state, what have you. You should feel that you can at any point just reach out to them and, and ask them for help or share your opinion. I, you know, it, it always kind of bothers me when people say, what are you doing about this? And what are you doing about that? Or how come you're not doing anything about this or that? And it's just like, you know, just ask us, just tell us to do something. Cause sometimes like, you know, I try to be out there as much as possible, but every day someone kind of brings up a new thing that I didn't realize. So just let us know. That's, that's what we're here for, is to be educated by you all about what's happening so we can serve you, you know? We're servants. We're, we're literally public servants. And I think that's what people kind of forget. Even some of my elected official colleagues kind of forget that we're servants. We're here to serve. So that's, that's what I would recommend everyone is just to reach out to us and let us know what you think we should be doing and, and, and get to know us. Because sometimes we might feel like we're, I don't know, unattainable. But we're human too. We make mistakes and we have our own opinions as well and, but we're, we're here to serve. So, so yeah, just reach out.
That is an excellent message. And, and I like the idea that you're here to serve and the only way that you can do a good job of serving is if people tell you
Yes.
what they would like you to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Well, Oscar, thank you so much for all the work you do that touches all of our lives and for being on our show today to tell us all about it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate everything you do and, and, and I'm grateful for, you know, TVSB and public broadcasting and the, and the crew here. Thank you for all your hard work. And yeah, keep up the good work, Cender. I really appreciate you.
And thank you. And thank you for joining us on Community Conversations and we'll see you next time.